This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Alright, so um before I start just if you have your phone just make sure it's muted.
Thank you.
Um so welcome to the ordinance committee meeting of January twenty fourth time is six thirty looks like all three of us are here. Um and we do have a set of minutes to approve and I believe January fifth.
Yes, fifth is correct.
Okay, so I entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Subdued.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion this second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I and I, okay, motion passes. Um public speak time today, so for since we have a few people here, let me just talk about what my plan is with order of business. Um so we do have the amendments to the city ordinance's pay plans on here. I wasn't planning on dive doing a deep dive into that tonight. However, I don't wanna waste anybody's time if you came here to talk about that, I'm happy to allow you to have some time to tell us what you think and then I'll let you know what meeting we're gonna do the deep dive and I was told that we have.
Can you just mute?
Oh, oh yeah, oh yeah, well I think you can mute okay?
Yeah, but.
So if you're if you're online, can you please uh mute yourself?
Yep.
That'd be great, thank you. Um so uh for public speak time, that's the time I'll allow you to do that since we're not necessarily gonna be talking about that as an agenda item tonight. Um uh as far as what we are gonna be covering in depth and I apologize for the miscommunication, I should have, we should have a system to mark what we're like actually going to be delving into. Um but we do have the vacant storefront ordinance that we hopefully have all reviewed at this point, that we got back from um the uh city solicitor, so if you're here for that, then you're in the right spot. Um and I know that counselor Zarek is somewhere, he wanted to submit some new language for um the safe and fair access, illegally protected reproductive and gender-affirming healthcare services, so we will talk about that as well. Um but at this time, I'd be happy to open up public speak time if uh you would like to speak, just say your name and address for the record.
Uh I'm Jeff Bag of the city planner, uh forty nine tap that, East Hampton. I, you know, had coordinated a couple people to come in support of the planning department changes and I think if it's okay, looking at the audience over here, maybe we come back when whenever the right time is instead of.
Yeah, I wa- I wa- well, I wanted to make sure that we dedicated a, you know, a appropriate amount of time for you to be able to to come and not be distracted by other issues, so um I think that's absolutely fine. Um you know, if as far as timing goes, I think we could look at in the next two weeks, trying to find a time that would that would work and um and we can coordinate that as well, we'll just coordinate with our next meeting.
Yep.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, I think that's the best use of everyone's time at this point.
Okay, alright, sounds good. Perfect. Alright, anybody else?
But feel free to stick around.
Yeah, you absolutely, I mean vacant storefront is honestly like.
Well, I'm gonna save the vacant storefront for a little while.
I'm gonna sneak out.
I you might wanna sneak out, but vacant storefront definitely something new. Um.
I'm sorry.
I don't think so.
Okay, gotcha, sorry about that.
Okay. It's a public meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
You're always welcome.
The, oh yeah, and if you, so I apologize.
That's okay.
Um I know it's on our agenda, we weren't planning on getting it to tonight just because we have some other things.
Oh, cool.
But I think if you are going to, if you have a presentation or if you have any information you wanna um impart to us, I can make sure that we can't, you know, connect with you to make sure the timing is right, so you know, if obviously it's important for you to be here, so.
Sorry. Yeah, whatever you guys need, just let me know. If you are looking for additional information on anything, I'm happy to provide.
Okay.
I put some stuff together, I tried to include as much as I could in the packet that we gave, but
Yep.
more than happy to provide additional things if you guys need and then just let me know when I can be here at all.
Awesome, I can do that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. Okay, um so that brings us, anybody else for public speak time? Okay, for things that are not on the agenda, so alright.
We have one in the.
Oh yeah, yep, so go ahead, uh Gary. You might have to unmute yourself.
I will. Hi, I'm uh my name is Gary Borbo and I'm from Ludlow. And I'm here to um speak about the ordinance that would affect pregnancy resource centers such as Bethlehem House. And currently, uh East Hampton is a pro-choice community. If a woman wants an abortion, she will call Planned Parenthood. And if a woman wants to give birth to her baby, she knows she needs help to do this, so she'll call Bethlehem House and get the compassionate support that she needs. If you vote for this ordinance and it leads to the closing of Bethlehem House, then you have turned East Hampton into a pro-abortion community. You will be telling every woman that if you have an unexpected pregnancy and your only answer is to call Planned Parenthood so that they can help her kill her unborn baby. You will have closed the door to the compassionate community that wanted to help. Thank you very much.
Uh anybody else from our online and be aware that we are um, I will open it to the public as we go for comment later, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else? Okay, alright, so um I guess what we can do is uh Counselor Zarek, since to respect your time, do you wanna come over here?
Oh sure, I just didn't wanna have my back to people like last time, that was all, I was just trying to be respectful of the public.
Oh, right. Yeah, I don't know what the best way to do that is.
But whatever, I what are you want me to come there and I can give it my chair?
Yeah, just go there and then pivot.
Yeah, sure, I was just, I just felt bad because I didn't need to.
Yep, so um and I think, you know, as I would not like to spend a huge amount of time on this tonight, I think what I'd like to do is I'd like to hear um you know, what the proposed new language is, maybe hear some feedback specific to the language, not random comments, I'd like to hear feedback that's specific to the language. Um and from there, allow us to kind of deliberate with it, because I really would like to move to the um vacant storefront ordinance. So um that's kind of what my timeline is for tonight. But um so last time, recap. Last time, um we kind of discussed some ideas around new language, we talked about maybe having some new language come back to us. I did see that um you were able to email like a a redlined version it looked like. Um and and I don't know if the other counselors saw that, but I think probably the best way to do it is just to talk about what what changes you made. Um and then we can answer any que- you can answer any questions from us and then, you know, I'll open it up to comments specific to that language and um then we'll move on to the next issue.
Great, alright, thank you.
Feel free to go.
Chairman.
Yep.
Yeah, so as uh just to recap briefly as people know who weren't here before or just to reinforce it, so the this news, this newer language, the safe and fair language kind of replaces the original language we had, which married language that's exist that currently in the Commonwealth exists in Somerville, it also was was um um was similar to language that existed in in both Hartford and the state of Connecticut and then San Francisco. Um and also now in some other places kind of since this conversations began Pennsylvania and and Washington state that uh created enforcement um within the city for um complaints against deceptive, what people felt would be deceptive advertising um in terms of services of of crisis pregnancy centers or limited service pregnancy centers and I think reasonably so, I think for the most part because of the size and and kind of resources of our uh health department. Um I think that posed some issues and so we pulled back and said, what are we trying to do here? So what we're trying to do here is educate the public, what we're trying to do, the 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 safe portion which which we discussed kind of creates um creates language on the municipal level for um a recent mass general law that was passed that basically protects people's privacy against um civil or criminal um reporting for pursuing um gender-affirming or reproductive health care. Um and basically just refers that to the personnel department for, you know, basically provides them with that information, they can do whatever they want with it. There's no specific re- uh requirements as to what our director of personnel would do once they have that information. And then the fair access piece is is really an education piece, it's to create um or mandate um dissemination of information from the city based on information that's already available on the state level, so um information about reproductive and gender-affirming healthcare, um you know, we talked last time against about the advisories from the attorney general, Department of Public Health and Mass Health around crisis pregnancy centers, uh the the state um the state's list on mass.gov of uh reproductive healthcare centers. Uh and so basically it just kind of creates a, it it asks the city, which we which or there, which would probably be the health department, but I I just used the term the city, because really anyone could do it, the clerk of the mayor's office could do it if they wanted to, because they manage the website, for instance, um to um first of all, recognize that it's within the the public interest of the city to um.
That may be added on to the.
Um it's within their their interest to support legal um of healthcare services that are available in the Commonwealth as well as to um shine a light on a topic that a lot of people um might not have full information about. Um and that we wanna make sure that if people are seeking certain services, that they're aware where those services are and they're also aware of the potential, the potential pitfalls um affiliated with seeking those services. So the previously, there was there was some leftover language um from the other um from the original version that that almost could look like the city was looking to create enforcement around this issue and so the the that kind of piece about, you know, limited service pregnancy center, you know, blah blah blah, usher the seventy before the public, that almost suggests that the city actually has then some role of enforcement and I wanted to remove that, because that's not what we're trying to accomplish here, what we're trying to accomplish here is 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 educating the public and making making this information available and visible and um and directing people if they do have complaints to complain through um certified channels, verified channels through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So initially, there's that whole paragraph under six dash twenty three dot four which was left over and I just cross that all out, because I don't think it was accomplishing what we're trying to do here. And so I added new language in that's kind of like a draft, because you know ultimately I would hope that the solicitor would clean this up. Um but do you want me to just read that or?
Why don't you, yeah, let's read it.
Okay, so the city acknowledges that access to safe, legal and transparent reproductive and gender-affirming care is within the interest of municipality regarding informed access to public health. The city shall make available in writing or via electronic communications Massachusetts state information relevant to access to reproductive and gender-affirming healthcare to include information from the Commonwealth pertaining to limited service slash crisis pregnancy centers. The city shall provide information that creates transparency and fair access to legal reproductive healthcare and gender-affirming services within the Commonwealth. This shall include information provided from the Commonwealth pertaining to access to such services and may include advisories, notices or other general information pertaining to reproductive and gender-affirming healthcare. The city shall direct the public in matters of deceptive advertising in regard to reproductive healthcare to the appropriate department of the Commonwealth, so in section six dash twenty three dot five dot one. Um so I could and 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 the last paragraph I think is important, because I think it was brought up reasonably so that some of the public that's come to our meetings have had concerns about um the concept of what's considered deceptive advertising and so I within this, within the realm of reproductive healthcare and I feel that anyone should feel empowered to follow the channels set forth by the attorney general and and you know fill any complaints that they feel are irrelevant. Um but I feel that this also still fulfills the the uh the mission of addressing uh or respecting the kind of the the uh the concerns that have been handed down to us from the Commonwealth, uh which is these health advisories which um I um that was pretty much it, I crossed out some language I thought was either repetitive or just kind of too focused further on. There's a few other things I would consider removing, I don't think that the city needs to go through a whole gestalt about, if they wanna make it, if they wanna, if they wanna properly inform of the public as to how to file complaints with the attorney general, make sure that's, you know, both in print or or digitally available and directed to that, I think that's enough. I don't think that they we necessarily need to go then through this whole like gestalt of like then attaching a copy of the ordinance and sending it with that, I think that's kind of almost repetitive and and sort of uh unnecessary, so I think six dash twenty three dot five dot one, I think s C?
C.
Um I don't know if that's necessary or maybe some modified, with the exception that that they could just attach a letter saying that that the uh a member of the public asked and then they were directed attached as a copy of their complaint. Um so that was.
Okay, so that's that's another one that we that.
Yeah, I could probably mod- I can, you know, modify that a little bit, so um.
Okay.
Um but again, I you know, I want to just be clear that a lot of this is in response to, you know, um all of this is disseminating information from the Commonwealth, none of this is our own opinions um or our own, you know, purely language. It's really just facilitating on a local level, you know, connecting to um information that's already readily available that a lot of people don't know about.
And and this last paragraph of um six twenty three da- uh dot four means that if someone got deceptive information at any reproductive healthcare facility, that they could potentially um bring that to the the health department.
Yeah, that's if they if they felt that that and again, it's about advertising, it's not about messaging.
Right, right, right.
So uh if they felt that they were misled about the services that were provided by a some sort of reproductive healthcare center that they could, they could um, you know, they could, they could
File it.
They could, well, yeah, they could find out, the health department should disseminate that information about how the complaint process is and they could send something to the state, just like they could do if this didn't exist, so this create, again, this creates visibility and transparency, because a lot of people don't know about some of these topics.
Right, okay. Um either of the counselors have any questions? Counselor Zarek?
No, I don't think so. Um I mean, I'm fine with uh C being in there under the um reporting category, if you wanted to leave it, if you wanna stripe it, that's fine with me as well. I, either way, I I don't I don't see it being that repetitive of a process. Um everything else looks perfectly fine to me. Um like I said at the last meeting, I mean, there's there's been some substantial changes, I think this is fair, it's equitable, um and it addresses um I think everybody's concerns while also staying true to the original intent of the uh ordinance, so looks good to me.
And so um before I open it up to the public, you know, I think what, you know, I'd like to um, since this is kind of the first time we're seeing this, I'd like to uh sit down with the language, um and there's and there's, you know, just a couple, do do I have an editable version of this? I mean,
Yeah.
if if I don't, I'm sure, like, um just, you know, just a couple.
Yeah, yeah, you can work on it.
Yeah, yeah, like just a couple like wordsmithing things.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
That, you know, maybe we can um work out before we take a vote on it and because then, you know, once we take a vote on it, then it would have to be approved to get go to the attorney and then it would have to come back, similar to the vacant storefront ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
So um it I'm as long as you're okay with that, we'll we'll extend this to to give us time, we'll extend this to another meeting where obviously we'll invite you back um and then take a look, take a look at. Yeah, you know, cause I think it, I mean, I think what Council Riley said is is true, this this seems to be a good kind of um without losing the integrity of the idea that there's real advisories being issued by the state and that, you know, there are real people complaining about this across the Commonwealth and that's not imagined that, you know, um this basically acknowledges that, but takes away the idea of targeting any specific um entity, especially within the city. Like the, I mean, honestly, as far as the Bethlehem house goes, like you would be hard pressed to have this apply in any way to the Bethlehem house at all. Um
True, yes.
And in fact, I think that if if you look at the advertising, which would be the website, because I think that's the only advertising that exists for the Bethlehem house, it already is excluded from anything listed stated here, so.
Right, I mean, yeah, both the uh the definitions within the ordinance and and I mean, and right now, I mean, if any resident felt so empowered, they could file a complaint without the existence of this.
True.
This just creates, this just creates education for people and mandates, you know, because the health department right now could probably create a policy, except for the fact that another health director could come along and just say, no, we don't, we don't wanna do that, so um yeah, I mean, without, I mean, just to again, like say again, this is not in any way um like it would affect, would not in any way affect the operations of of anything that within our city, so.
Yep, okay. Um fair enough, so any other comments from the councils before I open it up to the public? Okay.
I think so, I should just.
Oh yeah, go ahead.
The only thing I would say too is that with in terms of what you were recommending, which I I appreciate, because you know, I agree with the wording's I give it a B, I just like some, so I would defer to some of your experience too with writing word that says, I would just wanna, that would give you some time to to write a brief um to kind of explaining kind of the intention of this, because I know a lot of times if it gets to the solicitor, they can understand what we're trying to do and I think a lot of times they may recommend wording and things like that also, so.
Yep. Perfect. Um okay, so let's open it up to the public, does anybody have any um thoughts on the the new wording? Um or any of the previous wording in the ordinance and let's, again, let's try to keep it specific to information that we can use to try to craft this ordinance, um ideally, feedback on, you know, what's in specifically in here would be the most helpful. So and just make sure you state your um name and address for the record, so.
Uh Pam, Heather. Um so my question is, last time when we met, uh I thought that you were gonna have a draft that the lawyer had already looked at for this meeting, so that draft is, that was stated last time, so I'm pretty sure of that, so this draft is just something that uh is a, is gonna go to the lawyer.
So, just to be clear, as far as the process here, until we vote as a committee
Mm-hmm.
to approve the language, it's not gonna, unless we decide to do it separately from that, but that's the way I would like to do it now, is for us to agree to the language and then say, yes, we would like to send it to the city solicitor. It's not gonna get sent to the solicitor until we say that we're ready to send it to the solicitor, which we have, because we were waiting for this updated wording. Um and once it goes to the solicitor, it's up to the the president and the mayor to pay for that, to approve that and then um we would get the feedback back into committee where we would process that and then we'd take another vote to send it to the full council. And at that point, there would be, because it's an ordinance, there would be a public hearing as well, so um that's the process, but we.
Right, but. So it this been changed since the last time we were here?
Yep. Right, yep.
So can we get a copy of the new change now?
Uh I.
Is my question?
I I imagine that we could probably like s- send it somehow, but yes, I'd say yes, yep.
Okay, because I I would like to request that we get a copy of that, um like either this evening just to print out, no big deal, you know, uh or if you wanna mail it, or I could come back and pick it up at the town hall, I definitely would like a written copy of that.
I mean, it would be easy if you could. Yeah, email would be, I'd do like the easiest way.
An email?
Yeah. Counselor Zarek?
Well, I apologize for my misunderstanding, but what I recall the conversation was last time was there was a, there was a request from the public for a new version and what was stated was that the best thing would be for the public to wait until the solicitor reviewed it and that would be the public, the version we would share, I don't think that I don't recall any promise that that would be available today, just that someone asked if, well, can we see a version of the new language beforehand and I think the common what that was made was, what would be best is you wait till the solicitor actually reviewed it and we had kind of some finalized, so my only problem with sharing this, but I think that was what I heard last time, just to clarify on that.
Yes, I I, yeah, thank you, I just wanna clarify something, I'm thinking that you say it. Um first, yes, we can share the document, i- including the original one, because it's public, you know, why is part of that, it's part of the agenda, it's right there.
Yeah. Public, mhm.
I'm glad you do. Thank you.
Yep.
So I'm gonna stop, if you'll um allow me to do a about the process.
Yeah.
So that way they can understand.
Yeah, yeah.
So Councilor Zarek present uh a draft with an ordinance, right?
Right.
This, we send it to this committee and this committee start working on it and the process will change. That's why from the original one, now we have a different version from Councilor Zarek, that is, is 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 gonna be um addressed to about the same issues, but maybe the language in the ordinance is different. So you can have both, you can have the original one that he present a few months ago, I remember exactly
Great.
and you can have the latest version that that he's working on it today.
Great.
So if you pass us your email, probably Councilor Zarek will say both, and you can have both.
Mm-hmm.
Perfect.
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean that at the end of the the, at the end of the next meeting will change again, because probably Councilor uh P, uh Councilor Riley will make some changes, so but definitely you can have both, but for the process.
Well, I have a lot of people asking me and I'm like, I can't remember all that, so I'm like, for me, it really helps to have
Yeah, but for the process.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, my bad, thank you.
The town's involved, the fact you have a lot of people in town and they're asking a lot of questions, I'm like, uh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
No, it's fine, I I think that we can, we can arrange that.
Yeah, that was a lot of information too, you know, so.
Absolutely, I'm not, and I'm not trying to be opaque, I also want you to end up with a, with ultimately, ultimately, and I to call this if I was speaking for your committee, that this goes to the full council.
Yeah, we we see you.
I don't want to, I don't want you to be, have a version that's not really the version that we all have been talking about, but I'm happy.
Just one second.
Right, but people are asking me what goes on meetings, what are they, you know, what are they proposing and I have nothing, so I really, it would be very
Yeah. I'll show you whatever you want.
I'll have something in writing.
Absolutely, of course.
Yeah.
What do you need here, sorry.
Just just your email address.
Yep, and so we'll we'll deal with that after and that's that's fine, so um if.
Saving.
Sorry, yeah.
Yes, just to to.
And don't forget your name and address for the record.
Yes, by Sandy's in N C South Carolina, just a segue to what she had said. Right. Uh so the original is not online on the website?
Oh, it should be.
Should, should be.
Yeah, it's it should be.
Oh, it's, so how do you find that?
It should be in the minutes or the agenda for the meeting submitted.
Yes.
Yep, it's um in the minutes or it's in the agenda or I believe there's a, there's another section on the website and Jeff knows, right?
I think it's the agendas.
It's the agendas, yes.
Yeah.
Knowing which one.
Yeah, but I, so, because it's different than our zoning, which go into that folder, that's its own folder.
Yeah, I understand that.
I'll take a look now.
Yeah, we don't have our, we don't have our own folder, we're not that fancy yet.
It's gonna be. So if you go online and you look for for it on the agenda.
Yep.
So it's more specific, because the agendas, I see just what your program is for tonight.
For ordinance. Right.
But there's another section that you go onto?
Have to look for this full city council agenda.
The full city council agenda, so that's a.
Oh, city council.
Oh, city, yes.
Yeah.
I even, I'm sorry, I keep talking out of turn.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. That's fine, go ahead.
I even think, I think, I might be wrong, but I think because of the format that the um agendas are in, if you do a search for like, use like pregnancy, I think you'll get that agenda, I might be wrong now.
Yeah, I think, because they are searchable, they're PDFs, so.
Right, right. Yeah.
Um yeah, so if you go um on the the city website and you look at city council agendas, you might even be able to search from it right from there. Um.
But now this new version would is not.
But this one will be.
No, it's all about.
So, no, so this version is, this is new to this meeting today.
Right.
Excuse me.
Because it ju- it literally just got sent to us.
Right, 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 we hear constantly, we need and adjusted as.
Because we're, we're taking, we're taking feedback that we get and try to adjust it and, yeah.
You correct, if you search yours dot word, you gonna get it.
Yeah, so you will, yep.
Thanks. S- so if if Alan gives an email to you.
Well, I try to. I didn't have stuff really good, so that's why I'm asking you to do a printout, then I've got it in there.
I can, okay, yeah, yeah, and so, and so just so, so Omar does have it and he said he'd be happy to send it to you
I can.
Around.
Order.
um right after the, right after we're done here.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Um and so uh does anybody else that's here have anything to say or can I open it up to um?
I just have one other question.
Yeah.
This is a lot of the health advisories that comes from the state that you have in this ordinance and you revised it from others and eliminated the fine and some of the uh criminal intent and so forth. Should every state and city locally be, I'm excuse me, every city in town be doing this?
So I I would say the answer to that question is it depends on who's in that city and town and what their, you know, um what their threshold is for doing the work. Um it, right now, since there isn't a, um you know, and really if if someone proposes it, then in any city or town, it could potentially happen, but um you know, because it's so mild in nature, it's like if the state does something eventually, it will probably have a little bit more teeth to it. This is more of point someone in the right direction, help educate. It doesn't really have a ton of, there, I mean, there's no enforcement. The the zero enforcement to this ordinance.
I understand.
Um and so, you know, if if other cities and towns are so inclined to do it, then they can, um or not. Um and you know, yeah, I mean.
It's a lot of it, so clear is that um should be worked.
Uh yeah, sure, so alright, let's open it up to online, who do we have here?
Rich.
Looks like Rich. Uh Nope, you do. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Oh, all right, thank you, thank you very much. I I I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to uh
Can you just take your uh name and address for the record for me, please?
Yes, my name is Dick Pasquini, uh Seventeen Ridge U Center in Lubbock, Mass. And I'm on a board of directors at Bethlehem House. And um thank you for giving me this opportunity. Um, I I I that information is online. Now, we just looked at it this evening, okay? Um, so Pam, we can get you a copy, or you can go online and get yourself. Um I I don't, I don't know if th- this this board was aware, um, but we had an attack on Bethlehem House. People with light bulbs with paint in them threw it at the uh at Bethlehem House and smeared red paint up and down the side of the building. Scared everyone. Now, all the women that volunteer that go there are afraid. The doors are locked. We have a security system. The clients that come up to the to the door hear this noise that says you're on camera. It's absolutely ridiculous. This should not have happened. I could see if something in East in East Hampton was there that you'd wanna protect the women that are coming, but all of these women that are coming have already made a decision that they want their child and they that they're looking for for help. And it 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 it, why this guy is doing this is beyond, if you had a clinic in East Hampton that could that was doing this, I could understand it. So I'm I'm just speaking out and saying, please, vote this down. It it just give us peace so we can do the job that we're supposed to be doing, helping these women that are coming there who want their babies. Thank you very much. I appreciate you giving me the time to talk.
Okay.
I know I'm off the subject, but I'm very emotional when it comes to something like this. Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, anybody else? And I am gonna ask that if we can keep the the comments as close to the ordinance as possible, um, that would be ideal. Thanks. Um, okay. Nobody else? Okay. Um, so, like I said, what we're gonna do is we're gonna um, we're gonna move on to our next topic. Um, and what we'll do for our next meeting is we'll, um, I think the three of us individually can take a look at what we think of the new wording, and then we can come back with ideas. I'll do a little wordsmithing, um, and then, you know, we'll go from there. Um, so it'll probably be at our next meeting, even though there's a chance it might be two meetings, um, because I do wanna, we have a pay plan, um ordinance that we have to deal with, and that's really important. So I might just uh do a specific meeting for that and then put this on the agenda for the following. Um, and so, yeah, any questions? All right, good. All right, so we're gonna, uh, yeah, one?
Um, the gentleman who just spoke, he said it was online, as you have said.
Yes.
Now, what uh councilman has in the computer changed? Is that online also?
That is not online yet, so that's what we'll coordinate.
No, it's been again.
Okay, and
Yeah, and so, and if Omar gets your email, then we'll send that to you.
Well
Or somebody's email.
Sure.
Okay, so she wants me, we have to leave, just need to
And so, yeah, and we'll do that after. And um, I would love
Thank you, thank you.
if my EDIC member and my city planner would come to the table. Okay, and so, um, and so we can s- let me see if I can make some space, 'cause I would love to be able to see you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, all right, so now we're gonna move on to the next topic, which is our vacant s- our vacant property ordinance. Counselor Pete?
So before we get started on this, I just want to say one thing, uh, which is, um, just for the benefit of everyone's Uh, some of you probably have, I've discussed the fact that I've been recently working a little bit uh with a group of artists in the region to potentially get some sort of uh performing arts space going. Uh, this is, has nothing to do with my council life, but just a volunteer project I've been working on a little bit. Uh, it's occurred to me that some of the prospective properties we've looked at may be affected by this ordinance, and that it's something I'm doing on the side. Um, I have some concerns that my participation in this, at least as a voting member, uh, could be perceived as a conflict of interest, depending on how other events in my life go. Um, I will participate in the meeting, just in terms of offering uh thoughts on wording and whatnot, but when it comes to voting, I will abstain, and if uh that leads to a tie, then I suppose President Gomez has the power to break that tie. Uh, I just wanted to say that now.
Yep.
Uh, just so that we're all clear on, I I still intend to participate, but probably won't be voting, not 'cause I have a problem with this.
And and I appreciate the disclosure. I think that, you know, since we did start working on this significantly before you had the idea to
Long, long before I started working on this, I think.
I I think that that dispels a lot, that that alleviates any concern I have of you participating in the process, since you have been participating in the process since long before you decided to look for a performance venue. Um, and and I'll leave the voting up to you and however you feel comfortable. Um, but I do wanna, so where we did end off last time was we did get the revised language from the city solicitor, who basically went through and changed some of the um legal terms, some of the wording, and um really ended up with almost a identical in spirit document that we had proposed, um, which was a little bit different from the original document that was originally submitted to us, um, as if, you know, we um added, um, and increased the cost of registration, um
Yeah. Which we applaud.
Which, and and I think that that's, we are very happy to have your support. I just wanna remind people, the annual registration for the first year vacancy is five hundred dollars, and it's due of the time of reg- registration of the vacant property. Seven hundred and fifty dollar will will be assessed to the second year the property is vacant. And if you have a thousand dollars, will be due the third and subsequent years of property is vacant. So it's a progressive scale that is in basically designed to encourage people to use the properties that are vacant, um, which I, which is the whole point.
Hmm.
Um, you know, and failure to register the property, and none of this was changed by the attorney, um, would be subject to a hundred dollar per day fine. Then all of these things can be um waived, uh, and there we, so, um, the waiver process really didn't get changed in here um, from the city solicitor. And um, what I'd like to do is I'd like to just, you know, now that the whole committee has been able to look at the changes to see what your thoughts are, um, and then kind of move, 'cause I think that we're, you know, if we can agree to what the solicitor put in the final document, I feel like we could potentially vote this out and bring it to the full council. So um, I would love to just hear any thoughts that either Counselor Riley or Counselor Pete? Counselor Pete?
Um, I think that the changes that are made are sensible. Um, I do think, just one thing that I always say is once you actually accept all the changes in the track change document, it's always worth it to go through again, because just somehow grammar stuff, there's always like some sentences that you you thought you didn't need that word, and then you definitely do. And I definitely saw a number of those reading through this. I'm not gonna waste the
Yeah, that's
committee's time on that, those sorts of, just like this sentence needs to be cleaned up.
Yeah.
When it's all, it's abundantly clear what the purpose of the sentences, but just it's gonna need a review before it, I guess.
Absolutely, and I think the third document, um, which I believe it's called uh final version, um
That's right.
uh dated eleven twenty-three twenty-two, I believe that that got cleaned up in that part of the, um, so some of those things did get cleaned up,
Great, yeah.
as far as I can tell. The only thing that really is on on that, um, and did you, do you all have copies of this?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, how about, how about
But don't take my word for it.
No, 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 well, I I feel like generally when I sent these, I sent them to everybody, but this one, since it was from the solicitor, I might not have. So just let me make sure that I get it to everybody, because, um
Do you want me to do this?
Oh, yeah, sure, absolutely. Um, okay, I
I have one in an email from eleven twenty-three. Is that the one that the attorney had weighed in on? No.
Uh, there's one called, it's it's has three documents.
You got it now.
Um, one is um vacant building, um, changes accepted, and one is red line. And then the one that we sent was, um So that would have been on one, on eleven twenty-three, I believe. So it's called, it's called, uh, the one I'm using right now is vacant building ordinance changes accepted.
Eleven twenty-three, yeah.
Yeah. Gotcha.
I believe Counselor Pete is sending it anyway. Um, Counselor Riley, did you have any thoughts?
No, not really. I mean, look, I, sometimes I get, my eyeballs go a little crazy when I see all the, you know, the red line stuff.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I felt that the final looked perfectly fine. Um, I will say that I I think that Counselor Pete has a a much more highly trained eye for this type of stuff than I do, so, um, you know, I think that whatever recommendations he comes up with, I'm sure will be more than acceptable. Um, I I wish that I had a better answer for this. Um, I'm still very new to the process. Um,
That's fine.
So, yeah, I I, but I, it looked perfectly fine to me.
So, um, before I open it to other people, I just want to, so there is, if you look at the changes accepted document, which is what incorporates all the red line changes, there are places where, and you know, really, this is the biggest thing before we send it out that we need to do is insert department. I don't know if you all noticed that, but so for example, the money's raised by the fees set forth in this ordinance will be used to provide an online registry of vacant properties in East Hampton, which shall be maintained and updated by the insert department. And what we had come up with last time, when we had the building commissioner here, was that we felt that that made sense to have this live. Um, and it would also, you know, since we sit- state in the ordinance that the the money's raised by and by the fees set forth in this ordinance will be used to help provide for the administration of this, um, you know, I I think that that takes a little bit of the burden off of at least, and and I felt like the building commissioner felt okay with that. Is that, uh, did you all feel like that was a?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So, um, you know, so for this first one, uh, which is in the, you know, section one, insert department would be um uh updated by the building commissioner or their designee. Um, and then, so there's more of those. Um, and I just wanna kinda like make sure that we um fill in all those blanks before we get too far, 'cause, um, so let me bring you to the next one, section three, registration. Uh, D, city may exempt an owner from the provisions of this ordinance upon the presentation of a clear and convincing evidence to the insert entity that the existence of the vacant building under their ownership does not violate the purpose or intent of this ordinance. I would say since the building commissioner is the enforcement agent, that it would make sense again there to have the building commissioner be that entity. Does that sound reasonable? Uh, if you have something to say, I will call on you right now. Yes, please.
Did we have a conversation that included um building commissioner or fire department? Or is that basically that that could be considered, if if the building commissioner or or their in department designee was not available, the fire department could make that determination, or is this is not that place?
I think So we did talk about the fire department and the police department. That was in relation to the condemned piece, like when we found a condemned building that was like dangerous.
Okay.
Yeah.
That that it could be the police department, the fire department, or the building commissioner, because you might need to act immediately.
So that was on the side of the inspection part?
That was on the inspection piece. So this piece would still, since this is like, this is kind of like, oh, we're exempt from this because of A, B, or C,
Great, thank you.
the person that you would go to would be the building commissioner.
Yes.
So, yeah.
Just one quick note, so that's section D that you're talking about, and then
Yeah. Yeah, section D.
Uh, I didn't bring my laptop, so I'm scrolling down.
Sorry.
Um, I had just seen another reference to the waiver.
Yes.
Section four, paragraph D.
Uh
I'm just gonna apply for a waiver of being a registration company at the time of a promulgated by the insert department.
Yep.
Yep, and then, uh I thought there was another section, I let me find it. There was another section that talked about the city planner and building commissioner being involved in reviewing a waiver request.
Oh.
Uh, I guess it's
Is it E?
E, yes.
Yeah.
Just because I think there was a part of this where we roll in the idea of someone installing public art as one opportunity for the waiver, so
Right.
that was the discussion I had in my notes, is just that the planning department was on board to help support the building department in any way we can.
Okay.
And I think it came up in terms of of some kind of reg- the spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Yes.
Something where they kind of specifically said, well, we need some help starting that, and then maybe those, the waiver requests.
The waiver requests and the spreadsheet, I think, were the two areas that we put that in.
Yeah, right, so if la- a little bit later, it rolls in the planning department, and that first section is just the building inspector, so
Right.
I don't know if those two should be aligned with each other.
So, oh, that the, uh, from, so related, so the E, the waiver piece, that is um for the annual registration permit, failure to pay waiver. So that's E, um waivers for issues related to the improvement for the future reuse of the vacant building shall be refused by, um, because we knew that there'd be you know, site plan approval stuff, special permit stuff, if there, um, so that's, that's why we wanted to build in the planning department, but it's, um does that section, does E sound reasonable to you? Does it sound like something that bec- um, that makes sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, so section four.
Mm, section four E.
And figure, yeah, yep.
Yep.
Okay.
So who owns, who owns the form for the waiver itself?
The the form for the waiver itself would be the building commissioner, building department. Um, and we talked about, um it seemed like once we laid it all out, that, um, BJ was o- would felt comfortable with all, with those responsibilities.
That was the sense I had as well.
Yep. Let me see if I can find. Jeff, if you see the other part with the, okay, so it's inspections is um another place that we added. So so for inspections, we said building commissioner, police chief, fire chief, uh, and the health director or their designee shall have the authority to periodically inspect, because especially if it relates to a, um, a condemned building. We felt that as many people that would have knowledge of that, those workings wouldn't, would be appropriate to be able to conduct an expect- inspection or or to call for an inspection.
And then in paragraph B of that section.
The, with the fees?
It's the more, it's the most vague reference to a fee.
It is, um, because I think each each one of those departments would levy their own fee that would be uh within internal, within their internal structure.
So then does that sentence make sense if the amount is established by the city council?
Um, oh, that doesn't make sense, does it? Because I imagine, like, if the fire department's conducting inspect, an inspection, they usually will charge a fee for that inspection, a commercial inspection. And so, and we don't set that fee.
No.
No, so that, we might need to, now unless unless we just wanna say any of any of these fees would, and we set a fee structure for that.
Mm-hmm.
And so we would say, regardless of who does the inspection, here's the fee, um, which we can do, um.
Because otherwise, you're not saying necessarily who is going to be conducting this inspection, and if that differs by department, people would be vying for, well, I want the chief to inspect.
Exactly, exactly, exactly. So so I think, um, well, all of those, so the police chief, building commissioner, fire chief, health director, or their designees have the authority to periodically inspect. I think a a formal inspection would have to be the building commissioner, and we would, we could set the fee for that within the ordinance. And so we just need to make a note that we just need to set that fee. Which I think probably is the smartest thing, so I'm gonna, can I even make a note on this? I don't even know if I can. Thomas, or or Brad, can you make a note of that? 'Cause I feel like that's an important piece to
So let's, let's summarize it in the most basic terms here.
Um, for uh section six B.
Yep.
Need to uh explore setting a fee. And that is gonna be, I think, since And that is gonna be, I think, since we'll have the building commissioner probably doing all those, most of those inspections unless it's like an emergency, we'll. Do that in in consultation with the building commissioner. And see what they think is a fair fee and then we can. Okay. And then brings us to section seven, which is an insert payee. So um in the event that a vacant building has condemned, has been condemned in accordance with MGL one forty-three, not section nine, or a like statute. Such vacant building. Shall in addition to the annual registration fee incur a condemned building fee. Five hundred dollars per year payable to. I think the building department would make the most sense.
Yeah.
So.
Or well, here, sorry.
No, please.
There are certain. Not every department in the city actually has like collection capacities, so I'm wondering, does does that make, does the building department normally collect fees on their own or?
Yes.
Okay, they go straight to the, no, they don't go to like the collector or.
No, because it would be, if you're paying for a permit, you pay, you make that check directly to the building department.
To the building, then then yes, that makes the most sense.
Yep. Jeff.
Just I guess in full disclosure, there may be a little. Investigation that should happen, which is if the building department fees go into the general fund. There may be, there may need to be a discussion about setting up an account to which these funds go to the building department and stay there.
Yes.
Exactly, yeah.
So I don't know if it's a revolving account or some other account, it's a little outside of my area, but it's, I know just enough to know that I think all the building permit fees go into the general fund.
Don't, general fund.
So then, could we buy it as part of this ordinance, also just create a fund?
We'd have to, I think we'd have to suggest it, we'd have to go to finance, but I don't, it's not super complicated, it's.
Or that would go finance.
Yes.
Um it it's not complicated, um and Jeff, I'm at the very tippy toe of my knowledge too. I know in the, in other departments, we have looked at creating fee accounts and revolving accounts. Um and there's a specific way that they are created and it depends on the type of fee and then connected to revolving. So for instance, fire collects fees, but the fees go into general fund. Parks fees go into a revolving account that support the parks.
Right.
And I I don't know the distinction. I mean, I just know that the building and health and licensing set their own fees, but they're all processed in different ways.
Right. So I, you know, and it seems like. You know, if we wanted those fees to stay in the department to help with the enforcement of this, that maybe a revolving fund would make the most sense. Sounds like a question for Hadal.
Yeah, I would, I would defer to Hadal.
Is it?
Okay, and so, and I think that we can, we can kind of spearhead that. As long as nobody has any issues with them having a revolving fund that they can use to kind of support the operations around this ordinance.
I I I would just expect again similar request from every other department, which basically all of them collect things.
Yeah.
Including fire, and it's not great. Again. It's not. Some funds are are discouraged and not outright uh prohibited by the state because of of really other cities doing all sorts of things. And I don't, I just put it out there to think about, but Hadal, you know, ultimately Hadal knows how, Hadal will determine how we um. Treat that money in accordance to the law and what we learn from that.
Right. Okay, that's that's good information. Um so. And I think. That that does it as far as the things that we needed to make sure that we took care of. Beyond what the solicitor had sent back to us. Those those were kind of the outstanding pieces. Um was us deciding where, who was gonna um, you know, enforce or who was going to be the payee, those are. Um and and I think that that does make a difference. The, like, the fee structure I think is gonna be important if we wanna set it in conjunction with BJ, that is gonna be outside of. The realm of this specific wording, but I think it's something that we can do, and then looking at the. What kind of options there are for that department to collect these fees is the second piece. But other than that, I mean. To me, this looks like it could be a really good tool. Um that could potentially. You know, have an impact on some of the stagnation that's happening in our downtown.
Yeah.
So and um so I'd I'd be happy to throw it out to any final comments, any thoughts? Yeah, go ahead.
I don't think this is how law works, but do we have to say anything about? Anything at all, whether or not this has any play retroactively?
So if we can't ex post facto.
Great, okay.
So.
So we don't have to say anything about that?
Right, I don't even know if that's the right word, it it, but it sounds like it would be, right, doesn't?
So we, when when it's, when it's voted on, at the point at which the building commissioner and their department feels like they can move forward, that's day zero.
Uh yeah, that would be day zero, and and if we felt, if if we felt it necessary, we could give, you know, a a buffer in order to, for them to like educate. Uh building owners and and allow us a little bit of time for education. And and so, for example, plastics, we did a year. Don't think we would need to do a year, you know, maybe three months or, you know, something to that nature, which would allow for people to learn about this. People be like, oh, this is not a surprise. You're not trying to like pull the wool over us, but um, so I think that the, that is going, and plus also allow the building department to kind of get theirs. Themselves set up in order to be successful.
Yeah.
Um but I, like, that's a pretty typical thing that we would do.
And then just on that, on implementation, if you're not jumping to that. I have notes from last time, something about an initial letter indicating the new ordinance, like plain English explanation.
Yep.
Including benefits of potentially like having you be on the list so that people know that the real estate is potentially available.
Yep.
And I I seem to recall that we talked about then sending a letter identifying that a property meets the definition of vacant and then sending a letter. As that's the first, that would be the first day.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right, so the owners that are potentially.
So now you have ninety days.
Yes, exactly, so I, as long as a general outline of how we might actually implement it, that was my question.
Yeah. Absolutely, I I think that that makes a lot of sense. Yeah, that's great, great. Um any other thoughts? Ordinance subcommittee?
I don't think so.
Ah, that's great. And so we've already had this reviewed by the attorney. So if um, you know, what what I can do is I can um fill in those those blanks.
Mm-hmm.
Um and I'll send two emails. So one email would be to Hadal asking about a, an account for the fees for this. And and what would be legal, what would make sense. Um and the second email would be to BJ um around what is a reasonable fee for a inspection under the auspices of this ordinance. Um so those are the, those are the basically two pieces of homework. Before we, before we vote as the full council, I think those two things should be squared away. Um but that being said, I feel like this is in a pretty good place to send to the full council and to at least come up with a date for a public hearing. Because I think that those two things can happen in a relatively short period of time, at least getting that information.
Okay. So we all. We can do both simultaneously.
We can do both simultaneously, because there is, there is a lag between, you know, we can't set this until our next meeting, which is next week, and then. Probably won't set the public hearing for probably, you know, another, like a skip a meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And put it, two meetings out. Does that make sense? Okay, cool. Any other comments or thoughts before I entertain a motion? Alright, anybody? Wanna? Sorry. Oh, that's right. Okay, Brad, it looks like it's me and you. Do you wanna?
Yes, so so um.
Just to send to the full council.
Yes, I I moved to uh to send uh new language, uh oops, excuse me, let me just make sure I'm in the right section here. So I moved to send uh to the full council the vacant storefront ordinance, um pending uh solicitor review.
Okay, I will second that, even though we have solicitor review, but I'll second it anyway.
Oh, I'm, I apologize, yes, yes, yes.
No, it's fine, it's, it's fine. So um we have a motion to send this uh vacant building ordinance to the full council. All those in favor? Aye. So it passes two to zero, we have an absten- two to abstention.
Two to zero.
Uh great, so um thank you for coming, thank you for your input, thanks for the genesis of this.
Got it.
Yes, and President Gomez. Uh well, I think if we send it to, it's a.
Or you wanna weigh in on?
It's, well, it's, if if we send it to the full council, it's implicit that we will set up a hearing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can we in the same page?
Yeah. No, I think we're good. Um okay. I think that we're good. Um you can make a motion to adjourn if you want.
I will do that, so move.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
See you, buddy.